I'd like to say good evening to everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting. Before I start, I'd like to begin, I would like us to pause for a moment. For silence and remember of the UVA football players who lost their lives and the UVA community. Thank you. I'd like to introduce the members of the planning commission, starting from my right. We've got George Weaver. Weber from Madison, Bob Sworson, Bowling Green, Percy Minner from Mattapanai, Dr. Carl Horton from Poroa, and our new member, I'm saying this right, Julian, J.D. Young from Rita Church. And our staff, we've got Michael Fitcham, planning director, Chris McKenzie, our county attorney, licensee, administration. Who is the staff, please, please not plaque, please?
That's called.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The citizens of the republic, which is safe, vibration under our eye, individual, liberty, and justice for all. At this time, we do not have any minutes. Next, we've got unfinished, unfinished business. SXEX dash O two, twenty twenty-two, the applicant and request defer. Can I have a motion to accept? Motion so. Been moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It's being deferred to the December fifteenth meeting.
The next unfinished business, S E X dash O four, twenty twenty-two, can we have a staff report?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This public hearing, SPX zero four, twenty twenty-two, for Mid-Atlantic Materials, doing or in care of Bardin, Inc., owner and applicant, is a request for an amendment to a previously approved conditional use permit to amend a condition related to the buffer area along the easternmost boundary of the property. That buffer area has been rendered mute by the approval of a special exception for another sand and gravel operation immediately to the east of that property, which shares that common boundary. The applicant is requesting the removal of the hundred-foot buffer, as well as a requirement for a berm due to the similar nature of the use next door, as well as the board of supervisors' approval to allow the neighboring use potential access to the existing commercial entrance for Mid-Atlantic Materials, which the two property owners have entered into an agreement related to, to that interparcial access. This, you held your public hearing at the last meeting. Action was deferred to allow planning commissioners to conduct a site visit to that site. I believe all the commissioners who were available have made that site visit, and the conditions that staff previously recommended are included in your staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mr. Fincham, can you remind me again how many acres the Sneed property is? I mean, I've been there, but I, with Mr. Pennington, but.
The Sneed property, I don't have the number. I'm going to estimate that it's about sixty acres, sixty to eighty acres. It's, it's actually in two parcels. That was originally approved as a special exception, I believe, in two thousand nine, and it was amended in two thousand fifteen to allow potentially the interparcel connector.
And, but the, the parcel, Sneed, you're saying Sneed's is in two parcels?
Yes.
But they touch, touch each other, right?
They touch each other, but theirs is not actually the subject of the, the special use permit. This is the property next door, Mid-Atlantic Materials. They're the ones that are requesting the buffer.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Fincham, what about the fifty-foot setback from any adjacent property line?
County regulations establish standard setbacks for, for uses and, and development of, of parcels. In the RP district, that standard setback is a hundred and fifty feet from, from, for the front property line and fifty feet side and rear. Now, in this case, the rear, there's actually some wetlands and RPA on this, existing on the property, so that fifty-foot setback will be a non-issue.
Even to the adjacent property?
On, on the rea-, to the rear, yes, sir, that's correct. Side property line, technically, by ordinance, uses require a fifty-foot setback.
And that would remain in place, is that correct?
That would remain in place, yes, unless that was specifically amended by the commission and the board through, through the SC.
Okay, thank you.
And the, so we're saying the, the, the new buffer, the walls, the dirt walls have to go up before the old ones are moved?
Yes, the, the buffer, and there's a, a similar buffer requirement on the Sneed special exception. That, or, or berm, I should say.
Yeah.
That berm would have to be installed prior to the removal of the existing berm on the Mid-Atlantic Materials property.
And the new berm's going to run along seventeen?
The entire length of seventeen.
And then down the east side.
And approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty feet down the east side, yes, ma'am.
And how tall?
I believe it's an eight-foot-tall berm and a three-to-one slope.
Okay. Thank you.
Only one interest, correct?
That's correct. The, the, the existing commercial entrance for Mid-Atlantic Materials remains in place. And it, you've been up there, you've seen it's a substantial entrance, there's a left-turn lane as you go eastbound on seventeen into the site. One of the reasons the board granted the modification to Mr. Sneed's special exception was so that he would not have to put a similar entrance in accessing his property. So from a planning perspective, it really doesn't make sense to have two commercial entrances for trucks turning in and out of Route seventeen in such close proximity to one another, as well as to the intersection with Pep Meyer Hill Road. So from a planning perspective, it makes more sense to have one access point for both parcels.
We talking about a thousand feet apart? Would you say?
Maybe, at, at the most.
Do you have any more questions? Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Where a special exemption requests SP EX O four, twenty twenty-two, here to generally be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, good zoning practice warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that O four, twenty twenty-two be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of approval with the conditions suggested.
I would second that. I just want to make sure that we agree that that fifty-foot setback is involved with this approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Young, are you abstaining?
Okay, thank you. You said we're going to have protocol first, so I'll go ahead and open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The purpose of the public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. For members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or the representative will be allowed fifteen minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or their representative will be allowed ten minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you. Public hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your, your first public hearing is SPX zero six dash twenty twenty-two. New Earth Ventures LLC owner, Jordan Luquette applicant. They're requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, Section thirteen, and Article four, Section five, point twenty-eight of the Caroline County zoning ordinance on a portion of tax map fifty-five dash A dash seventy-nine and seventy dash A dash thirteen, containing sixty of approximately one hundred and seventy-two acres of land. The property is located fourteen thousand, one eighty-six Devil's Three Jump Road, Milford, Virginia, in the Mattapanai Voting District. Opposed use is a therapeutic healthcare facility. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan designates this area as rural preservation. The applicant's requesting special exception approval for a therapeutic healthcare facility, which proposes to use traditional methods of natural farming to educate clients on their mental and physical health through nutrition and various forms of meditation. Clients would not need referrals from doctors. It would seek out the facility in a similar manner as an individual seeking therapy for, for support from a therapist. The facility will use sauna therapy, hyperbaric oxygen therapy, cryotherapy, sensory deprivation, and other forms of, of treatment, and will provide glucose monitoring, DNA and blood panels, both to assist the nutritional needs and to ensure the physical health of, of the attendees. Licensed medical professional will be on-site at all times, and that license is included in your packet. The facility would provide services for anxiety, eating disorders, depression, and other mental health disorders diagnosed through the natural practices that were identified. Staff has looked at this application and is actually still developing its conditions for the consideration of the planning commission. So therefore, you don't have any suggested conditions in your staff report at this time. Staff also thinks it would be appropriate for the planning commission to conduct a site visit to this site, where you could actually see the layout of the property and ask any additional questions related to the services provided to, to address any questions you may have. So staff believes it would be appropriate to defer action on this request to your December meeting for the completion of, of any suggested conditions for your consideration and a site visit if you so desire.
Thank you. The applicant present?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So what we are trying to do is open up what's kind of like a wellness resort or retreat. It will cater to individuals as well as corporations, anyone who wants to bring their staff to kind of recoup, rejuvenate. These things are kind of popular, and especially tech companies or industrial companies. And what we'll be doing is keeping the agricultural zoning aspect, but doing it according to organic gardening principles, and then adding the educational aspect to that for people who need to, we want people to encourage learning those growing principles, because we, we kind of see shortages now of pesticides and fertilizers coming in. So, and we also think organic principles are better to grow by. So we'd like to be encouraging that, as long, as well as Mr. Fincham mentioned of the, the wellness side. So we work with third-party affiliates, where people would bring in their blood samples and reports they got from that of any vitamin deficiencies, or anything that's particularly wrong with them. And then we would have the doctor on-site, as well as nutritionists that they can consult with, and provide them with, you know, catered meals and things like this. The hyperbaric oxygen therapy, it is well-known to help kind of boost autophagy, which is help cleaning out junk in your cells, kind of keeps you healthy, opens the blood vessels. Cryotherapy is very popular for athletes and exercise right now. And sensory deprivation helps more with the meditative practice, just kind of get out of the stress of daily life. You know, quiet yourself and be there. We have, as you can see, an eight-acre pond on-site. The one concern that I had about the survey when I looked at it was the RPA buffer, which is right by where we have these buildings on the other side of the pond. So I know that there is, I think, a fifty-foot, a hundred-foot setback there for that. So if that is the case, I don't know the rules down here exactly, but if that is the case, then we are willing to push those buildings back to where they should be according to that buffer.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is open. Anyone who will speak against or for this project, please come forward.
My name is Paul Fioka. I'm in the Mattapanai, Magister, you know, district. And I just have a couple of questions. I was wanting to know about how large the facility was going to be, how many people were going to be on-site, and what kind of traffic we were going to be talking about. That's my questions. I don't know if I'm for it or against it, because I don't know what we're really getting into here. And like, since I live on Devil's Three Jump, it's going to affect me and my grandchildren, so that's my concerns.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Earl. I'm in the Mattapanai District. My property is immediately adjacent to the northeast side of this property that, that you're talking about. And I just want to say that I'm totally in favor as a neighbor. I've lived there for about seventeen years now, and I've, ever since I've lived there, had concerns that that property might be turned into a housing subdivision or a trailer park. And so I'm thrilled to see that that would not be the case here. And so that's all I really wanted to say, just that I am in complete support and look forward to having it open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Tubman, Mattapanai District. I live also adjacent to the property. And I, I'm, I'm curious as to what type of farming is going to occur there. What are they, what are they going to be raising? And the mental health is, I understand there's a need for assisting with mental health issues. It is in close proximity to a school, two schools, and I do have a special needs child that lives right next door. And I just am, have some concerns about, you know, what all is involved with, with the, the process. You know, I'd like to know a little bit more than, than what, what the, the fellow has shared with us. And I think, you know, in order to be okay with it, or not okay with it, I, I'm, I'm not getting enough information on what the process is, or what's going to be going on next door to be comfortable with signing off on something like that just yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Randy Pitts from Mattapanai. I'm born and raised on Devil's Three Jumps Road. I, I agree. I'd like to know how many people are involved, the amount of traffic that's going to be involved, because that road can't handle what it's gotten down, I'll be honest with you. I'd like to know water and sewage. It depends on how many people are there, things like that. I'm not saying I'm totally against it. I just, it's a lot of things that need to be answered. Our county tried this something similar to this three different times, and it never worked. So just make sure if we're going to do this, let it stick.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I read the application when it came through the packet, and I had a few questions. One, is there any, like, is there like a medical license that they need to have when they're having all these patients coming in and all the testing? And two, are there any drugs involved? Is, I don't know if there's marijuana or anything like that? So I just hope that's not involved in the process, and I think there's a lot of, bringing in a lot of people from outside the county onto that narrow road might create a disturbance to the other neighbors. That's all my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. Staff have any questions? Or the staff of applicant?
The applicant has the opportunity to make another presentation and respond if he wants. Yes, sorry I didn't mention the numbers before. So we are going to be putting five cabins on the property. There is already three existing houses, two of which will be used for people to stay in. Basically, there is enough room for twenty people in total to stay. We will also be holding the workshop, workshops, such as yoga and meditation workshops. So at that time, we are putting a cap on the number of people that can actually be on the property at about sixty, but only twenty people can sleep there at a time. We are attempting to do all of this off-grid, meaning, well, not electric, but we're, we're doing solar power, we're doing rain harvesting. We're trying to do this as sustainable and eco-friendly as possible. That's part of our organic principles that we're doing. Nothing like marijuana will be available. There will be no drugs. Natural supplements, things like D three for people who have deficiencies, or vitamin B, those kind of things. But no prescription drugs, no illicit drugs or anything like that. As for the farming, we are going to be doing a large garden, standard vegetables, peppers, peas, fruits, watermelons, tomatoes, you know, so on and so forth. We are going to have a field full of lavender for effecting for the smell to coming out. It's a retreat for, and we're also going to be having growing containers. So they have this new, the shipping containers, and you have it is AI-powered. You can grow micro herbs and, you know, lettuce out of there and, and, and spice, and herbs and spices, basically. So those are all before people on-site. We're also going to have chickens on-site, and I'm hoping to have some bees on-site as well as some sheep. So that is something that we are planning. As for when that will exactly happen, don't know. Let's see, what were the other questions? As for the traffic, so as you said, we'll have twenty people. As for people with mental health, this is not for people with extreme conditions. We're not giving out lithium to anyone. We're not giving out, you know, again, no prescription drugs, so this is not, this is for people who are having anxiety and depression in their daily lives. This is for corporations to come, for people who are burnt out at work or overly stressed out. So this is, is, yeah, it's not for, we're not going to have any people acting out or running. It's a, it's a place for people to come, to be in quiet, be in peace, be in calm, have some healthy food, get some advice about how to deal with their stress or their burnout, or whatever it may be. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, could you remain for a minute?
Go ahead.
Oh, you want me to go? I wasn't quite clear on how many people you're treating at a time. Were you saying you're treating twenty or sixty at a time?
So it depends for the, it's twenty.
Okay, twenty.
Twenty can stay. There's going to be other workshops like yoga or exercise, meditation.
So there's some day use.
Correct.
But twenty people that can stay on the.
That can stay on the property at a time.
Okay. And a vineyard, I have a map, actually, of the facility. I know the public didn't get to see that, but, okay. And is there some woods on the property?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're still, I see the health department, you, you've got applied to that, and you're still working with them on the?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, so the health department will take care of any sewage and water issues and approve or disapprove. And let's see, I think I had one more question. Could you, oh, the ages. So these will mostly be people eighteen and older adults?
Correct, this will be adults.
It's an adult facility? And could you tell us a little bit more about your company, New Earth?
Yeah. So we started this, the actual owners of the property, I'm one, I'm in the C-suite of the company, but I don't, I'm not the owner. So the actual owners of the property have a company called My Planet Living Center, where they do showrooms for construction, but for eco-friendly and energy-efficient materials. And so he kind of wanted a place where we can translate that and, and use those materials in building the structures there with natural building materials, or renovating the structures there with such things, again, solar power and those. And then we're integrating kind of our ethos of helping people to relax and try and reframe and rethink, because everybody seems, it seems we're going through a weird transition globally and nationally. So people seem more stressed out and anxious than, than normal, especially younger folk, I think because of social media and whatnot. But that was the idea behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm kind of confused. So people are going to be living there, or?
No, sir. Yeah.
So you like, come to visit like a four hours or eight hours and then leave?
So you can come and stay for a night, you can come and stay for a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Only, I think they're saying only twenty people at a time can stay overnight. Do I have it correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. But some people can come for day-use therapeutic reasons. Do you, you all accept insurance for this, or this mostly, you know, private people coming in?
It's private, come, people coming in. No, we don't, because, yeah, it's not, it's not up to stuff where we would need the insurance for it. Like I said, we're not treating anything very serious. It's normal, everyday, like default maladies that people. It's normal, everyday, like default maladies that people tend to have. You know, like I said, stress, anxiety, depression.
And, and you were saying some businesses, some companies might provide this for their employees?
Correct, yes. We will be marketing to companies, uh, right, and they're coming with ten employees at a time. And then they, you know, some, they like to do, it's a fad among companies now. They like to take their employees out and take them to a nice place. Maybe they, you know, eat healthy, be healthy, have a good time together, do some team-building activities.
I like a wellness retreat.
It's exactly what it is, ma'am, yes, yeah.
More questions?
Yes, sir. Are you Mr. Ducat?
Yes.
Okay, I, I did not know.
Yeah.
Mr. Ducat, I have some questions, sir, and please do not take them personally.
Okay.
I have gone over your request and the information provided. I think, a lot of folks might not know what hyperbolic, hyperbaric oxygen therapy is. And to put it in a nutshell, that is putting people into a one-hundred percent oxygen environment. Usually done for scuba divers or divers who are suffering from the bends. Uh, the de, de, decompression sickness. It can also help with serious infections, bubbles of air in the blood vessels, wounds that may not heal due to, uh, diabetes or any other malady, radiation injury or other things, and there, there is a list of them. The cryotherapy is a local general use of low temperature and medical therapy. And most people are familiar with, uh, sprained ankles or athletic injuries where they apply an ice pack. Are y'all contemplating anything above and beyond that? The ice pack? I mean, are we talking total body submersion into cold water?
So there are two different types of cryo tanks. Um, there are the ones that you go inside like a, like a full room where you're fully covered. And then there are the ones that come up, uh, to the neck, so your head is out. And then you're in there for a period of a minute, two minutes. Um, and it's different from a kind of a cold dunk tank and that's when you get into cold water, it goes down through your bones, like you would, you know, if you fell in cold water before. The cryo one goes only skin deep. But it still helps with kind of, um, like you said, those injuries, sprained ankles, uh, you know, worn-out muscles and whatnot.
Could it affect internal organs such as the heart?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, are you a medical doctor?
No, but, no, I mean, from my studies, from my looking at it, not that I'm aware of.
Alright, sir. Uh, sensory deprivation. Uh, I don't know how long y'all are contemplating doing that. Uh, but when a person undergoes sensory deprivation, the brain attempts to restore the sensations in the form of hallucinations. You aware of that?
I know that's possible, yeah.
Okay. Sensory deprivation was developed, are you familiar with the history on it?
No, sir.
It, it was developed by some armed forces in NATO as an interrogation method.
Okay.
Still going on in Guantanamo as we speak.
Okay.
Now, in your packet, you stated that there was going to be a medical professional onsite at all times.
Yes, sir.
My question is, who is that medical professional and what level of medical profession have they attained? Because in the documentation that you provided, the University of the State of New York Education Department Officer of the Professions Registration Certificate, Stefan Lubitz.
Yes, sir.
Who is that?
Uh, he is a friend of ours who is a doctor in New York.
He is a friend of yours who is a doctor in New York? Is he the one that's gonna be onsite?
Correct, sir, he used to be an oncologist, um, but he is retiring. He is much older, I think he's sixty, late sixties.
Yes, sir, he's been in practice for fifty years, he's an OB-GYN.
Yeah.
Is he still licensed to practice medicine in the state of New York?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Not by your documentation, his expired February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
He is not listed in the Commonwealth of Virginia as being approved by the Virginia Board of Medicine.
No, not in Virginia, no.
So how's he gonna practice medicine in the Commonwealth of Virginia?
I, to be honest, I don't know the answer to that question. I would have to talk to him about it, because he planned to come down here and work with us. And so that's why I asked him for his license. And that's as far as I got with him.
Alright, and just for the record, the University of the State of New York is not an educational institution. Dr. Lubitz obtained his alleged medical degree by the Free University of Brussels.
Yep, yeah, he's European, sir. He's, he's from Brussels. Polish in origin, but from Brussels.
Okay. So if he is not allowed to practice medicine in the Commonwealth of Virginia, what's gonna be Plan B?
We would find someone who is registered in the Commonwealth of Virginia. If I, my, I guess my, I had an assumption going in was that he would come down here and become registered? Because that's his plan to come down here when we, you know, when and if we are ready to go up.
Alright, sir. And, uh, for DNA and blood work?
Those are third-party affiliates, a company called Wild Health and another one called Inside Tracker. Uh, we will not be taking blood panels onsite. We will not be taking those, uh, people will come with that information beforehand.
Okay. So you're planning on having five cabins?
Yes, sir.
Without water and sewer, is that correct?
No, we will be hooking up water and sewer to them.
You will be?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Now the shipping containers, these are the big metal transport, uh, containers that we normally see.
Eight foot wide, forty foot long, sir.
Yeah. So those are going to be, uh, mounted above ground?
Yes, those will be, uh, next to the garden.
Alright, sir, thank you very much.
Uh, sir, I have a question, um, reference to meals. You indicate that you're gonna have meals prepared onsite, how are they gonna be prepared? Is that a commercial meal or what? How, do you have a commercial kitchen or?
Uh, we, yeah, we plan to have a commercial kitchen, yes, sir. We also had planned to have stations where people can c- cook for themselves. So if they wanna go to the garden and pick their own vegetables and make their own little snacks and meals, they're welcome to.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions? For the applicant?
Now, the only thing I would suggest is just, you know, make sure you have some type of healthcare professional, you know, onsite.
Okay, I will discuss with him and if it ends up being, because I'm not involved in that part of the process with him. Um, so I'll discuss with him and then if not, we'll, I'll talk, uh, with the owners.
Yeah, um, I, I mean, people are not as, and a lot of this is holistic medicine. A lot of people are not familiar with that. But some of these, uh, things you're offering are available in, you know, within Virginia, within, I'd say, within a fifty-mile radius of here.
Cryotherapy and hyperbaric, hyperbaric oxygen is available.
And some of it is even, yeah, available in Fredericksburg. But yeah, it's good to have a medical professional, some type of medical professional onsite.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, please.
Sir, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we defer this matter to a December meeting to give the staff time to complete their conditions.
Staff with a, um, site visit?
If you deem it necessary.
I, I would like a site visit.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Next agenda? Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, your next public hearing is SPX zero seven dash twenty-twenty-two. James and, uh, Kurtley Jr. and Kelly Jerk, Kurt, Kurtley, owner and applicant, requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, Section thirteen, and Article four, Section five point twenty-three of the Caroline County zoning ordinance on a portion of tax parcel seventy-four dash A dash seventy, uh, containing approximately five acres out of a seventy-acre parcel. Property is located at twenty-five thousand two zero eight Jerusalem Road, Milford, Virginia, in the Bowling Green voting district. The requested use is a special events facility and the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan designates this area as agricultural preservation. The applicant is requesting a special exception permit, uh, on a portion of tax map seventy-four dash A dash seventy, uh, for a special events permit to primarily, uh, for purposes of weddings, uh, and other similar events in an existing barn and surrounding property, uh, on, um, seventy-four A seventy. The total area is not expected to exceed five acres in, uh, uh, total in area and the applicant is estimating approximately, uh, facilities for up to a hundred guests, uh, at that location. The applicant himself is not catering for events and any food and licensing would be handled by, uh, the prospective clients using the barn. The applicant is requesting approval to host approximately twenty-five weddings and similar events throughout the year, uh, excluding, uh, the winter period. Um, and as those who visited the site today will note that it was quite chilly out there. And plan to have all events end by approximately ten PM. The surrounding properties, uh, either are agricultural, uh, with a few smaller residential uses within approximately twelve hundred feet of the facility. Um, the applicant has provided, uh, document, uh, in support of the facility by neighboring properties and went out and actually visited all of the neighboring properties to advise them of the proposed use. You do have, uh, some suggested conditions in, uh, your staff report for your consideration. Um, I would note that, uh, we have identified a couple of deficiencies with the application that need to be corrected prior to, uh, any action by the planning commission. Um, one, um, you have a, a general plan of, of use of the property that's included in your application. Uh, however, the area of, of what they're identifying as the application does not show all of the access to the site and they actually need, that access would need to be included, uh, as part of the special exception permit application. So, so we need, uh, to amend the, the GDP to incorporate the access to the site. Uh, that GDP also needs a, a little bit more technical information to, to support the application, um, either through a survey, uh, and/or meets and bounds description, um, so that we actually have definitive boundaries that the planning commission can, uh, forward to the board, uh, and that we then actually, uh, have as a reference, uh, for any inspections related to, uh, the use of, of the facility. Um, to that end, um, we would actually suggest that you continue the public hearing to your December fifteenth meeting, um, so that we can work with the applicant, uh, to address those issues, um, and bring that back, uh, to the, uh, the commission at that meeting, uh, with those deficiencies corrected.
Thank you. So can we still hear from the applicant or?
Yes, sir, you, you still hold your public hearing tonight, the applicant and any abutting property owner can speak. Again, we would just recommend that you hold the hearing open because we do need to modify the boundaries, uh, of the description for, for the facility.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kelly Kurtley and this is my husband, James. Last April, we purchased a hundred and thirty-five acre farm off of Newtown Road. After a short period of time there, we decided we needed to share the natural beauty of the farm with others. The gorgeous setting, open space and rustic barn quickly steered us in the direction of establishing a wedding and special event venue. We've spent the last eighteen months making improvements to the property. We've had power run to the barn, landscaped the property, planted more than forty trees, painted and organized outbuildings and added an impressive front entrance. Our role will be to help organize, coordinate and execute an event while providing the ceremony space and reception dwelling. Our intentions are to utilize five acres centrally located on the property. We believe we can comfortably host up to a hundred and fifty guests in our existing forty-by-sixty barn and open backyard area. We have designated nearly two acres to accommodate parking. We will not be catering the events, guests will need to hire a caterer or food truck to provide food. If alcohol is served, clients will need to apply for their own banquet ABC license in advance of each event. We will be responsible for bringing in a bathroom trailer and having it removed following the event. Our goal is to host events during the spring to fall wedding season. These will take place on the weekend, generally Saturday afternoon and evening. Live music is possible at some events but will end by ten PM. The barn and event site is centrally located on the hundred and thirty-five acres, so it is well removed from all surrounding neighbors. We've brought a letter containing signatures of neighbors in support of the venue. We did not come across any with an opposition. In regards to our community, our intentions are to encourage clients to support several local businesses for their events, including food preparation, flowers, music, photography, hair, nail salons, et cetera. We are in the process of introducing ourselves to local businesses and look forward to establishing and maintaining relationships with them as the venue becomes active. In preparation of the venue, we have obtained a federal ID number, activated a business with the State Corporation Commission and received a business license from Caroline County. We believe this is a needed service that will enhance our community and provide a beautiful venue option to families in the area. We thank you for your consideration and ask for your support. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. Stay, go?
Out of this time, thank you.
Well, let, just, just let me, one quick, quick question.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My buddy and I were out there today and, and it's still a beautiful place.
Thank you.
I was out once before with Mr. Sealy, but, uh, there are, uh, as Mr. Fincham said, a, a few deficiencies. And I, I know that And I, I know that you don't have any difficulties in working through those deficiencies and getting this moved forward. So I'm just gonna work on that and. Everything should be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is open. And I wanna speak for against this, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, again, I would recommend that you not close the hearing. But that you continue the hearing to your December fifteenth meeting.
Thank you.
And of course, I would like a site visit. And I would like to see how the traffic on that road is and, you know, how it would be people coming and going from this event. Et cetera.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we were out there, um. This is very nice, this little sketch that's here. Except there is real, no detail that we could walk around and say, okay, that's thirty feet from this side, that's fifty feet from this side. So I think um, the first thing I would ask staff to do is talk to these. The applicant and say, okay, they need a real survey that says. This is the first time I actually heard that the, the barn was actually forty by sixty, okay? Now I was out there, it's a, it's a beautiful location, don't get me wrong. But I would need much more accurate data before I could even entertain this application. Thank you.
No questions?
So, yeah, the, the motion, it, per staff's recommendation would be to continue the public hearing as opposed to a motion to defer. So the, the motion would be to continue the public hearing to the December eighteen, fifteenth hearing. So, so when um, the application is deferred, there's no more public hearing. Uh, there's just further discussion. This motion would keep the public hearing open so that. If, if there was any further public comment, you'd have the opportunity to take that based on the updated information.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this public hearing until December the fifteenth at our next regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And Mr. Fincham, you will provide the applicant with what we actually require. Thank you.
Do we have any out, any in all matters? And our motion to adjourn to a December fifteen meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion carries.